Good evening, Garden City. I'd like to call to order regular city council meeting for Monday, October 28th, 2024 at 7:00 PM. Our first order of business is our opening ceremony, which consists of the National Anthem, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence for those service members who have given their lives for our country. If everyone would please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Smith, if you'd take roll call, please.
Now that I caught my breath. Mayor Jacobs?
Here.
Mayor Protem Doold?
Present.
Councilmember Carefotis?
Here.
Councilmember Squires?
Here.
Councilmember Earl?
Here.
Councilmember Witt?
Here.
Councilmember Lynch?
Here.
You have a quorum of seven.
Thank you. Item four is the approval of the agenda.
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Monday, October 28th, 2024 council meeting agenda as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Lynch. Discussion from table.
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
Just a quick question. 11B3 isn't under the action items that we just approved?
Correct. That's renew the contract with WCA assessing. So that's what we just got.
So he just approved it and it's not on there, so it needs to be added?
Yeah, he sent out an email with the updated version. So if you printed it, it was on it. If you didn't, it wasn't on it. Okay, further questions? From public? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, we have recognition tonight for Halloween decoration contest winner. And this is Kyle, Christina, Avery, Audrey, and Bryn.
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 Bryn. I knew I'd get that. So they were, if you haven't seen their many decorations, they do Christmas, they did Halloween, and this year they were our grand champion. So we have a little plaque. 2024 Grand Champion, the Garden City Halloween Lighting Competition. Congratulations to the Bostic family on being recognized as grand champion in the Garden City 2024 Halloween Lighting Competition. The Garden City Council applauds your creativity and dedication in transforming your home into a spine chilling spectacle for all to enjoy. Your eerie display cast a spell over the neighborhood, filling the air with Halloween magic and drawing countless brave souls to witness the haunting beauty of your decorations. From ghostly ghouls to creeping shadows, your home brought thrills and chills to visitors of all ages. For your bewitching spirit and for conjuring such a memorable Halloween experience, you are hereby recognized as the grand champion. Congratulations. Do you guys do all the work?
We sure do. We dance real hard. You like dancing? Don't be shy.
All right. And what that gets a gift certificate to Ace Hardware Store. So we'll get a picture.
Mayor? If anybody watched Good Morning America last week, their house was featured on Good Morning America also.
Okay, let's see. I see no county or state officials. We do have another presentation from DDA, informational meeting presentation in compliance with Public Act 57 of 2018. Community Development Director Matt Miller and assistant, his assistant, John Prosh.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. This is the informational meeting which is required by the Public Act. This is the second meeting of two meetings that are required each year. The first one was held during the DDA meeting. We did do a notice to all of the taxing authorities and also published a notice that the meeting was going to occur and the times and places where that would occur. So we have a presentation before you and we'll go to the therapist. So the first page is just our information and where to contact us at the DDA. And the next is, again, this is information which many of you know, but some people don't know. So we'll go through kind of from the beginning and go through our slides as we're going. The DDA, though, is a board of trustees that is appointed by the mayor and the count and then approved by council. The board is comprised of business owners, property owners, residents, and the current mayor of the city. The board also has by the bylaws chairperson, vice chair, treasurer, and a secretary. And this year is the first year that the DDA Board of Directors entered into a contract with the city to provide DDA services through the Community Development Director, which is me. So the next slide is just a how the board is established and our, I forgot the word, our chart here. So the DDA Board of Trustees, of course, they make all of the decisions and then it goes down to the DDA Executive Board or then to the Community Development Director and the Assistant Director, which is John. And then there are three standing committees, the Promotions, Maintenance, and Design Committee. That is our, kind of how we're established and kind of the working relationships we have. Also, John and I, since I've started, have been working together for the common goals of the DDA and the DDA Board. And I think it's going well. John's here, so I'm glad. Glad to be working with John, taking his knowledge and using that for the betterment of the, or for the betterment of the DDA. The next is kind of DDA funding. And this is really, the purpose of the meeting is that we're capturing funds and we're using them to concentrate the improvements in the downtown area. But the primary financial support comes from what is called a tax increment financing. It's a TIF. It's a mechanism to redistribute those current taxes and then focus those in the, in the DDA. It is not an increase of taxes or a dedicated millage. The next slide is kind of the TIF process. So it basically, it is the establishment of a base level of property tax revenue is established. That is our year 1983. And then from that point forward, so that, that capped the value at that time of what the city would capture, and then we use that difference to what is called the increment to provide the services in the DDA. So this is the difference between the base level and the new total in the TIF capture. So in the next slide, we kind of have the layout of 2024. So we show that it's the current SEV of the district has the $33 million and then, of course, less that capped value, which was $12 million at the time in 1983. So the captured value is over $20 million. And then that is established basically based on the mill rate that is established by the council, actually makes a determination, and that kind of gives us our total budget for the year, which is just over $600,000. 371,000 of that comes from the city portion and then the other additional 231,000 come from what we call those taxing authorities. And we'll go a little bit more into those. And those are kind of the funding sources, which is the next slide. The DDA boundaries comprise 4.6 of the total, 4.6% of the total taxable value. And of the 4.6% of our city's total taxable value, 62% is captured by the TIF. And that is, of course, approximately $371,000 for this year. The other taxing jurisdictions, and you see those are Wayne County Schoolcraft, the Wayne County Jail, the transit, the parks, and the Huron-Clinton metro parks. And on the next slide, did a pie chart just to show how, how that's all broken down. And so I took those percentages and converted those to the pie chart so that we see kind of the largest portion is the city contribution and then the other portions are those taxing authorities that contribute to the funding in the downtown district. The next slide shows us how the funds are used for business attraction and district attraction, community events, economic vitality, first impressions, and building awareness. That is a drone shot looking north, kind of just a Ford Road looking at Planet Fitness. Thank you to Zach who flew the drone, took those pictures. I think they're really neat to see. Then the next is, of course, the boundaries of the district. So those boundaries establish where the money can be spent. And so those boundaries, of course, are on Middle Belt from Bach to Maplewood and on Ford Road from Harrison to Henry Ruff. And those are the addresses that front all of those streets. In the next slide, kind of how the DDA operates. We are a separate department or entity under the city. The budget, though, is approved by the council. We're working in collaboration with the city and has contracted services for myself. This year, we did close the office, which was downtown, and we provide all services now at City Hall. We did have storage and things like that. And the equipment and decoration storage is now at DPW. We acquired a shipping container that provides the storage for all of our decorations, things like that, going the trees, the lights, the streetlights, all of that. The DDA aids businesses seeking facade or site improvements through the DDA facade loan program. And we also help facilitate new business development by meeting with the property owners, investors, and guide them through the process and business attraction and retention. Prior to me coming, there was nobody really here to help. So either whether in the district or not, that's one of the tasks that I'm working on with every investor that comes into the city, to help them go through the process and establish the business in the community. The next slide is provided services and projects. Of course, the streetscape, which this year we just completed the new decorative lighting, brick wall repairs. That seems to be constant and they keep getting hit. So unfortunately. But we are, are always maintaining those and making sure that they're safe and look good. Streetscape maintenance and, of course, decorations with holidays and flowers. And again, part of the additional cost is that we're protecting the investment that was spent before on the streetscape and making sure that it looks good from now and going forward. We did this year the Hometown Heroes Banner Program, the Lucky Squirrel Craft and Vendor Shows were very well attended. I've got a lot of people in downtown. Next year, we're working on trying to make those better, trying to establish a base so that we have more contact with people that attend events in Garden City so that we can, of course, invite them to come to the squirrels, but also invite them to other things that occur in the city. Then, of course, the Chili Cookoff. We do that in conjunction with the Police Department, Fire Department, DPW. We all have open houses on that day and we're really trying to work together to make it a big festival that people come and enjoy downtown and also then, of course, see the city and all the departments. We were, of course, the Garden City Commons, flowers were planted. The Garden Club did that this year. The Santa Land Parade, which is coming up, we're title sponsor, Music in the Park, Christmas tree lighting. Also this year, the DDA funded the Flock license plate readers. So there's a couple license plate readers right in the downtown and those assist the police in doing enforcement throughout the city. And then also, we're working on ribbon cuttings, welcoming new business in conjunction with the Garden, Garden City Business Alliance. But you can see kind of the, those service projects and things that we're working on as we're working, trying to work in collaboration with all the agencies in the city and all the departments in the city. Then a kind of the future plans and concepts, things that we're going to be working on next year, the Housing Readiness Grant, the Master Plan Amendment, which we were awarded in May. Then the Safe Streets Grant, which is a collaboration. If you can remember, we were awarded a grant with Inxter, Westland, Wayne, and Garden City to look at the safety of the roadways that traverse our western region. And so we'll be working on that because, of course, Ford Road and Middle Belt are those trunk lines that go through, of course, Garden City and then our neighboring communities. So that's a collaborative grant that we were awarded through the USDOT. Be working on business attraction, doing ordinance revisions, trying to streamline them to help with the process. And of course, money is And, of course, money is time to investors, and we want to make sure that they meet the ordinance and that they can go through quickly. We're going to work on the 2025 Chili Cookoff. We're going to work, like I said, work together to create a better event, same with the Lucky Squirrel. We're going to be doing an assessment of the parking lots coming up and figuring out, as Kmart has sold, we have to figure out what's going to happen there and then look at those parking lots behind there. Loan program review, we want to see. This year, we didn't fund it that much, but next year, we're going to see if we can increase funding to work on those programs. Also, I'm working on a business one-stop online, kind of a one-stop shop that will be done online, so businesses know where to go, what to, what ordinance is to look at, and then use that seven easy steps to open a business in Garden City and go from there. Available property listing, hopefully we'll go online the next month or so that we'll at least know what properties are available in the city. And I just completed a DDA business and working on the occupancy, but we have really a good snapshot within the last kind of couple weeks of what businesses we have in the, in the DDA, who's the contact person, all of that, and it's updated. It's, it's kind of, it's kind of like squeezing a water balloon because they open and close, it's hard to keep track of, but we have a pretty good snapshot right now, so we're working on that, so. And then I'm going to kind of turn it over to John to talk about the loan programs and then kind of just take a pictorial walkthrough downtown to see some of the improvements.
Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. The DDA offers loan programs such as facade improvement and parking lot improvement loans. We're looking to re, revisit these programs to update them and make sure that they're, you know, good for the customer, so to speak, good for the businesses, and also that we're hoping in the best way we can as a DDA. We, we started a business grant for signs. Really, really, the idea behind that was to improve businesses. You know, we have, we have a lot of businesses in town that are longstanding, right? So we wanted to be able to have updated signs according to the ordinance rules. So we offered them some grant money to do that and assist them, as well as architectural assistance to try to motivate them. Hey, we're going to do some new drawings, new layouts, new facade, new look of this business. And that's the whole idea behind those grants, to kind of motivate those businesses to want to do that and upgrade. Next slide is going to show a space on east, east out of Middle Bell, just north of Ford Road. Some of you might remember it as the old Kitty's Chop Suey Building on the left, and then the, the easement was filled in by the, by the new owner to add another location. One of those, one of those is currently being rented out as a, as a business. So those are updates. The next slide shows the Garden Banquet Center. It's beautiful. It's a beautiful space. The owners had some setbacks, but they're working through it, and we hope to see that business opening. It's a huge footprint in the downtown, like to see that space used. The next slide will show a new bakery and cafe that, that signifies that they're moving to town. So this is all upticks for the downtown, right? New businesses coming to town. We want, we want the general public to know, the council probably knows, that's your job. We want the general public to know, there's a lot of things happening in the downtown, and this is the core of the city, right? So we want to show that off. Next slide. This one's exciting, Family, Family Heating and Cooling, one of the business biggest, largest employers in the downtown. Family Heating and Cooling, huge sponsor for major sports events in, in Detroit. They've been in, they've been in business for years, and they've just shown off a rendition on the right side of your screen of their new building that they're working on right now. Very exciting. Some of you that have been around long enough to know, I think this was a Long John Silver's? I don't remember. Arby's reinvested, reinvested in the, in the downtown area. They, they redid their, their building, so that's huge. That's a national franchise chain. Next, next slide. Taco Bell also did the same thing. They reinvested and made their space look new and improved and fresh, so we're excited about those as well. Next slide shows off a local business owner also, a, a, a business that was here, but they took it over and they, you know, it's freshened the place up, right? Get great service, place looks good, it's on Ford Road, right near downtown. Next slide. Michigan Academy of Gymnastics expanded their footprint as a business, and they moved into another large footprint building. You know, in today's day and age, that some of these large footprint buildings are hard to fill because businesses are transforming to electronic or mobile or, or whatever have you. So we're excited to have Michigan Academy of Gymnastics, which brings members and memberships into the downtown, which brings foot traffic, people traffic. KRX Pharmacy, again, a new, new, new business and a new facade right in our downtown, right on Middle Bell. And the old Hershey Shoes has attracted a new title and real estate business to what we know as Ford Road Frontage. Verus Bridal, they used to be in a different city, they moved to our town. And as you can see, this was also one of the times that we got to do a grand opening. These are, these are pretty exciting, right? For, for the, for the business owner as well as their customers and also the city, right? It's proud for us. So, next slide, show another grand opening that we attended, the Malu Cat Cafe. This unique business, they offer cafe items and also cats. Go in there and pet some cats. Next slide. Eureka Yudri, another business that has expanded their footprint, they're downriver with the location, and they moved to Ford Road right here in the downtown. Also another grand opening that we got to participate in. Next slide. Mr. Miller mentioned our Hometown Heroes Banner Program, hugely successful this year and is coming back again next year. So you've probably seen these up and down Ford and Middle Bell on our new light poles. So just adding, adding some, adding some flavor to the downtown, but also doing exactly what we like to do here in our, in our, in our hometown is to, you know, honor our heroes, our hometown heroes. And next. This is a contact information. This is direct line that goes right to Mr. Miller's office, and also the website has more information. We both work right out of City Hall, so if you need information, come in, report to the Building Department, and they can direct you to either one of us to assist in any way that we can with either, you know, residents that have questions or business owners that have questions about their business and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Does anyone in council have any questions?
Presentation.
Thank you.
Yes, Mayor, you guys are doing a fantastic job. I'm happy to see the empty spaces being filled. Thank you for your hard work.
All right.
Okay, we have no community events, no petitions or communications. Item 10 is a public hearing on Chapter 124 Marijuana Establishment Regulations. I will ask Mr. Miller and our attorney, Ms. Catherine Kaufman.
Good evening, again. This is our public hearing for Chapter 124, which is Marijuana Establishment Regulations. So kind of just a lay of the land and the, how the agenda is set up. Of course, we've got, this is a public hearing for what we would call the Police Power Ordinance in the Business Regulation Section of the ordinance. But then later on the agenda, there is kind of a co-ordinance, Chapter 154, which is the zoning regulations of the marijuana establishments that we will, if it is approved, then we will kind of talk about the zoning section. So the first is to permit adult use, and the second will be kind of to regulate that. So with that, though, Catherine Kaufman has worked with me tirelessly to draft an ordinance that we feel reflects the, what kind of the, the council had given us direction, and we've heard from the public regarding this use. So I'll take it away, Catherine. This is Catherine Kaufman.
Thank you. I'm Catherine Kaufman from Baucham Fall in Portage, Michigan. With me, I have my associate attorney, Michael Beala. We are municipal attorneys from the Kalamazoo area and have been involved in municipal regulation of marijuana. Just kind of fell into it, starting back in 2008 with the MM, MMMA, which was the Primary Caregivers Act. We are also the General Counsel for the Michigan Townships Association, which is the parallel organization to the Michigan Municipal League, which you would probably belong to. So as General Counsel for the Michigan Townships Association, we've been involved in not only legislative drafting of the MMFLA, but also working with municipalities to deal with both the MMMA, which was the 2008 Primary Caregiver Act, as well as the 2018 MRTMA, which is the Adult Use Act, and the 2016 MMFLA, the Commercial Medical Marijuana, was a vote, was a legislative process. The other two were voter-approved initiatives, which you may remember voting on at some point in time. So as an attorney who represents many municipalities across the state, as a General Counsel for the Michigan Townships Association, we have been intimately involved with municipal regulation of marijuana. We have clients as small as I have Baltimore Township, which is out by Hastings, which is a rural township of farmers and Amish people, and they got one of the first licenses in the state for medical marijuana. They've elevated that into adult use, and that affords them this year $56,000 for their one adult-use retailer, and that's how much they got this year. And a township whose whole budget is like $350,000 a year. So for them, it really works. We represent the city of Portage, which is 50,000 people, which use the process which I'm recommending for you here tonight, which is for adult use too. Under adult use, we can only totally prohibit or we can limit numbers, and we'll talk about which approach I'm recommending here. I'm talking about, since you're interested in doing this, that we not control by numbers because that's the most, most frequent area of litigation. Because if you limit numbers, then you have to pick people who will get your licenses. You have to develop standards and criteria to do that, and that has been a very ripe area for litigation. So what we instead recommend, and basically, I would just say both Michael and I are members of the state bar cannabis section, we participate in the conferences, we educate ourselves in terms of what the industry is looking for, what they think, but we think about it from the flip side, which is the municipal side. So we have a lot of experience doing that. We've been involved in voter-approved ballots, referendums under the Adult Use Act, all, all aspects of this. So here in Garden City, we were contacted, I, I don't know if it was two years ago or 18 months ago, but we came out and spoke to the council. I don't know if any of you were on the council at that time. We kind of, that kind of lapsed, we didn't hear for a while, and then it picked up again recently, where we were brought back. And so for a number of years, I don't know how many exactly, you've allowed medical marijuana facilities in your municipality, and you've limited those by numbers. Under the Medical Act, which is the 2016 MMFLA, you're allowed to limit the numbers. And there's no, under that act, the way it was drafted and adopted by the legislature, if you did nothing, you would not get medical marijuana facilities. You had to affirmatively adopt an ordinance and saying, we're going to do this, and we're going to do this, and this is how many. So you did that. Now, the medical market has been severely impacted by the adult-use market. So having a medical license at this point, some people don't even hold their medical licenses anymore, they let them go, or, and just our general, general layman's experience is if they cannot advance into the adult-use market, it's going to be very hard for them to continue to exist. So in that, in that light, many, many municipalities are moving forward for adult use as well. There is some financial gain, you can charge up to $5,000 for a license or a renewal of a license, but those funds are restricted under the statute, under the Adult Use Statute, the 2018 law that we voted in, for application, administration, enforcement of medical marijuana. So when you're getting that $5,000, you need to kind of make sure you're earmarking it for inspections, building official review, application, his review, and his department, those types of things. You want to try and track that. So that's not a huge quote-unquote "moneymaker" for you. But if you have an adult-use retailer, which is a seller, or you have a microbusiness, which is a grow, process, and sell in the same location, just smaller number of plants, you then get to go into the X-size pool, I'll call it, across the whole state, and all the money, there's 10% gained off the top of all the sales, and that money goes, and it's split, not just the municipalities, but also to, you know, studying the impact for PTSD for veterans. And so there's money that's allocated, but you will get a percentage of that. Last year, it was $56,000 per license, okay? Now, we're dropping some licenses, some people are letting their licenses go, but also the sales remain extremely strong. So the money is still there for the licenses, and if you are in process, I think if you have a license in effect in a September, this is how they're doing, at least at this point in time, they may change the Cannabis Regulatory Agency. If you have a license and an operation by September and March, you get money. So that's how it goes. And, and you can look, if you go to the, if you go to the Cannabis Regulatory Agency's website, you will see all the list of municipalities that got money last year, and you'll see how much they got. Not only if you participate as the city of Garden City, but you're in Wayne County, Wayne County will get money too. So, you know, it goes both to you locally, also to your counties. So that's why there's been a push about moving for, towards adult-use marijuana. Essentially, medical alone is probably not going to be able to survive. It's just of, just my personal opinion, I'm sure you've heard from others as well, it's just not financially feasible to continue when people can go to the adult-use market and except for, you know, sometimes under the medical market, children under 18 who need the use of medical marijuana, they can still use it, but it's really not the big demand now. The demand is in the adult-use market. So under the adult-use law, that 2018 act that we voted in, we voted as voters to approve, the township or the city here in this case can either totally prohibit any adult-use marijuana, or they can limit the numbers. If they limit the numbers, then we have to develop these criteria on how to pick the winners and losers. What we have came up with in our firm and what we've done in other places like the city of Portage is, we don't limit the numbers, but we limit under the zoning ordinance, so we have two ordinances, a licensing ordinance, we have a zoning ordinance. Under the zoning ordinance, we create like an overlay district or a district where it's the only place that these adult-use marijuana retailers can go. We have just piggybacked on the M1 district, which was already where the medical marijuana could locate. It's a special land use, we kept that the same. There were already setbacks included in the medical marijuana regulations that you had about setbacks from Ford Road and setbacks from schools, residential, parks, et cetera. Those are all the same. We just repeated them for medical, we repeated them for adult use. So they're all there. But we did go with the unlimited numbers, and I think it's on page nine of this ordinance. And what this ordinance, this is your regulatory ordinance, as Mr. Miller explained. This will be the licensing ordinance. I put the first part of it, Section 2 is all the medical marijuana stuff which you already had. I just put it all together in one section. Now I've created a new section in your city code for marijuana. A lot of this was in the zoning ordinance before, so we're moving it into a licensing ordinance. And then if you look at Section 3, that's the adult use, and on page nine is really where we're going to look at what is going to be allowed here in the city of Garden City. 124.72, Authorized Adult Use Marijuana Establishments. We say unlimited for growers, and that includes Class A, B, or C, and any combination, so those are the number of plants you can have in each, okay? The Cs are the biggest. Unlimited processors, but only if they co-locate with an adult-use grower. So you can't just have a processor anywhere, they've got to be with a grower. Grower starts everything, all right? And finally, unlimited retailers, but only if they're co-located with a grower and a processor. So the point of this is vertical integration of grow, process, sell in one location, okay? People want to get the retailers, retailers are very financially viable, you know, viable, they make a lot of money. But you're, the direction I've received here is we want, you're not going to get the retailer unless you grow, process, and sell all at the same location. So that's how that's drafted. Zero of anything else, none of the others, no microbusinesses, no secure transporters, safety compliance, marijuana event organizers, et cetera. None of anything else, okay? Just grow, process, sell, unlimited in number. And then, you know, we have this whole structure set up where it's the same as for the medical, you know, what the licensing process would be, how you apply, how you, what applications this, I have it set up for the city clerk, so the city clerk is going to get a little more work there, taking in applications. And then it goes through in 124.74 on page 11, it talks about, and getting over to page 12, separation distance requirements, those are the same as the medical, distances from Ford Road, that's the same. It says that marijuana processor shall co-locate with a It says marijuana processor shall co-locate with a grower, and retailer must co-locate with grower and processor. So no stack licenses, which means you can't stack a bunch of them at the same location. You could change your mind about that later on if you wanted to. A lot of times, if somebody's a grower, they want the ability to grow several in one, you know, several licenses in one location because they use the same, you know, infrastructure, they've got the sewer, the water, whatever. So maybe as you get into this, you might change your mind about that. That's also the same with an excess grower. An excess grower requires, at this point in time, and I might be wrong, but two medical licenses, five adult, two medical Cs, five adult, adult-use Class Cs, and then you can put more on top of it. So if this starts, if you go through this and you think it works, and everything's going well, then you might, at some point in time, consider changing that, loosening that up a little bit. Under the state law, the 2018 state law, it allows a medical licensing, medical facility to co-locate with an adult-use, so we've got that in here too. We just kept this very closely to the state law. All the rest of it, which is inspections, wastewater, odor, separation activities, all this was already in your zoning ordinance. I moved it out of the zoning ordinance. I put it into the licensing ordinance. So none of this is new, I don't think. Okay? None of it's new. We just set up the annual fee, which is $5,000. You did not have an annual fee before this. So, you know, we're going to ask that everyone pay their $5,000, which is state law mandates or says you can. Some of our townships will take $5,000 the first year, and they'll take less on a renewal, but we've got this set up for $5,000 at this point in time. And then there's pro, there's a whole section here on how you non-renew a license, how you suspend a license, how you revoke a license if something goes wrong, right? We got, we've learned this through experience and transfers of license. A lot of times, you'll see an original entity get the license, and then either they change the components of who the partners are in the LLC or whatever, and they have a different name, and they want to transfer the license. There's ability for you to do this here. And so I think that's, yeah, we have a fee in here for someone if wants to transfer. And so I think that's all, under law, under the 2018 act, any violation of the MRTMA is a municipal civil infraction, so we put that in here, municipal civil infractions. It's not a misdemeanor. We have to match our penalties with what the state law is. So that's what we have. This is the, as Mr. Miller explained, this is the licensing ordinance, and then we drafted the zoning ordinance components as well, which we will talk about, I think, later in the meeting. So that's my comments at this point, and I'll be willing to answer later on, I understand, and after the public hearing as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. You'll have three minutes to make a comment, the public, on this. We won't answer questions, but you can make a comment. Anybody wishing to speak from the public? Once again, anybody wishing to speak from the public? Okay, at this time, I'll close the public hearing. Item 11 is the consent agenda. Councilmember Witt.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, 1 through 5, including 5A and B, as presented.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Squires. Comments from table? From the public? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, action items. Item 1 is chapter 124, which was the public hearing that we just had, that we had no comments. Motion is in order.
Mayor.
Councilmember Karafodis.
I move to approve amendments to chapter 124 Marijuana Establishment Regulations.
Support.
Support from Mayor Protem Dole. Comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Earl.
Couple of questions. Can you explain the Cannabis Regulatory Agency? What does it oversee? What does it control?
Okay.
And who appoints them, or how do the members get on the board?
Well, it's an agency of the state of Michigan, like the Secretary of State or something like that. So the director is Brian Hannah. He is, has worked in the agency for a while in, in terms of enforcement. We're personally very glad that he's the new, I wouldn't say new, but probably within the last two years, the director, because he has stepped up enforcement tremendously, which is important to the municipalities, because if you allow licensed entities, whether medical or adult use, in your municipality, you want to make sure that the state agency is going to be behind you on that. So if we have any issues, this is just my experience, but if we have any issues, now that Director Hannah's in place, we can email the regulatory agency as soon as possible, and they go and they do inspections, or they are very careful about what's going on. I don't, he's the director of the department. I don't know, you know, how he was chosen as director. And then it is just an agency, and they regulate licensing. They do, they work with the Bureau, the State Fire Marshal's Office. The Bureau of Fire Services does the inspections, comes down inspections. They work with the state police and do the background checks. Here, we also have written into the ordinance that your own police department would be able to look at background checks and that type of thing. So that's who our state agency is that's regulating all this. It's important that we understand municipally-wise here and start sending people to, they have municipal summons, I think there's one coming up this week, that either Michael or I will watch, and get a pipeline, get contact right to the agency so that you can email and get contacts there. And they're very open to input from the municipalities. As you know, you don't have to do this. So if you decide to do this, I find that the agency now especially really wants to work with the municipalities and make sure everything's going okay.
Can you tell me who mandates, or how they mandate, the amount of money that comes back to the municipalities?
So it's in the statute, and it's 10%, I want to call it an excise pool, or excise fund, or something like that, of sales, of adult-use sales. If you want to go to the Cannabis Regulatory website and Google, I forget what it's even called, but you'll be able to find it. They pay it out in March, I believe. Right, Michael? Yes, March. So, but of that 10%, there's also some funds that are dedicated, other, some funds go to research for veterans, some funds go to something else. So then what's left over? And it's based on how many licenses for adult-use retailers or microbusinesses you have in your municipality. So if the city of Detroit has a lot, okay, they're going to get a lot. You know, I have a township that has one. They got $56,000. When this first started out, the first year was $29,000. Then the next year, it was somewhere around, I don't know, a little bit more, $50,000. This past year was $56,000. Now, there's been a shakeout in the market of marijuana. It's kind of, they're, they're much tighter margins at this point in time. Some licenses are letting go and giving up, but the ones that are staying in it are also, there's a lot of money being made. You know, especially, I am in the, we represent border counties along the Indiana line. The pressure to establish the marijuana facilities along the Indiana line is enormous. If you ever want to Google something, read about Menominee, Michigan, which is up on the Wisconsin line, and what's happening there. So there's money there, and it's determined by that formula in the state statute, and then also the Cannabis Regulatory Agency administers it. There's also administrative rules that help. If the statute doesn't answer all the questions, there's a very thorough set of administrative rules that are available, that you can just Google Cannabis Regulatory Agency. Right on their front page, you either pick a medical, you pick adult-use. If you go under adult-use, then you're going to be able to click a link on laws and rules, and they're all right there.
Mayor, I have one question.
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Karafodis.
Just so that we're clear, every place that we're going to give license to has to grow, process, and sell, and there's no smoking or anything like that onsite. Nobody's allowed to do any of that, correct?
They could grow and stop there, okay? But if they want to sell, they've got to grow, process, and sell, okay? And yes, no, there is no, well, first, under state law, they can't, can't be smoking in public or anything like that. And we also put that, I think, in this, in the ordinance. So yes, so, you know, the next thing is, you would then, if this ordinance is adopted, work with your police department. I mean, obviously, and let's say there's problems with the licenses. Let's say you find out somebody's got a grow, process, and sell license, and they aren't growing. They're just holding a license or something. You know, there was, a question was asked, could I mandate how much they, that they must grow everything here? I don't think I can mandate that under law. If they have a license, they have a license, okay? So I can't say they have, everything they sell here, they have to grow in this building. I don't think we could legally defend that. So I wasn't willing to put that in the ordinance. But if, let's say I have a license, I have one that's lapsing, or they won't let me in to do an inspection, or they have license lapse and they haven't renewed, or something like that. Number one, I follow my process and the ordinance for what we're going to do here, but then also, we're going to call the state regulatory, Cannabis Regulatory Agency and let them know we're having problems. And, you know, I don't, we don't call in on these things without having a good basis, because when you call in on somebody's license and possibly ding their license at the state, there could be millions of dollars at stake, okay? Millions. And so you want to make sure you're being fair, but also you don't need to let anything go, really. And that's, you know, our, our firm works with a lot of different municipalities. We do this all the time, and we, you know, get to know good players, bad players, and everybody in between. But if you have this ordinance, you have the right to enforce your ordinance. Now then, you will also, at some point in time, you know, you'll start to lose, use your judgment therein as well, because if somebody's, you know, got approval, and it's, it says you have 365 days to get built and in process and in business, and then there's some possibilities of extensions. Well, during COVID, and during the slowdown of materials and all the building stuff, we had people who went way more than 365 days. They went over two years because they couldn't get the building materials, okay? So when somebody's already put millions of dollars into your municipality, and they're trying to wait for some type of odor control thing to come in so they can open, we generally would not shut them down at that point. And you can imagine, if you did shut them down at that point, there might be litigation that would result. So, you know, you kind of got to use your best judgment when you start to get into this and work with people, because they're business people. Just, I just held the whole presentation on business. These are business people too, so.
Thank you. Further comments?
Mayor.
Mayor Protem Dole.
Who's responsible for the inspections?
Well, under the state law, Lara's going to do the inspections. Lara, excuse me, Cannabis Regulatory Agency, which is in, a division of Lara. They, to get their state license, okay, they will do the inspections. Now, the facilities or establishments often don't want the city coming in as well, but under our ordinance, the city has the right to go in. We're also getting $5,000 per license application to underwrite our costs to do that, okay? So if we want to send our building inspector in, if we want to send our fire department, and I think there's provisions in here for the police to go in with notice, with reasonable notice or something like that. So we are going to be doing that, but we are getting paid, we should be getting money to underwrite the costs of that. The, that's for your license. That's for your city license. The Cannabis Regulatory Agency will also do it. So what we have here is, they have to be pre-approved by Cannabis Regulatory Agency before they even apply to you. So understand that. These people are going to be doing a lot of work before they even come to you to get pre-approved, at least conditionally pre-approved, by the Cannabis Regulatory Agency. There's going to be money expended, there's going to be things put out, there's, so, so when they come to you, then they're going to start your process. And so you will be doing inspections. You want to, like, in some of my smaller municipalities, we just leave everything to the state. We make sure they have their zoning approvals, but my fire department doesn't go out, my police don't go out, we don't do the background checks, we leave that to the state. But that's for very small rural townships. Here, your desire was that all this stuff that we already had in our ordinance for medical, we want to duplicate it, we want to keep it, and we want to apply it to adult use as well. So there will be some inspections done here at the city level.
Okay. And what would the frequency of those inspections be?
Well, generally, initial licensing, and then if, if there's only, every year, they're going to renew their license with you. I don't think you necessarily have to go back out on renewal unless you want to, but it's built in that the police can go in essentially anytime they want. So if the police are having problems, if they think there's people selling drugs out of the back door, if they think something like this is going on, you have the right to go in, okay? I forget if it says reasonable notice or what it says, but we, we can provide notice. And then what you do, if that's the issue, you contact Cannabis Regulatory Agency and say, "I have some issues with this establishment. This is what we have found. We are looking into possibly either revoking license or suspending license," okay? And let them know that you're in that process, and they are going to pretty much probably jump on it and help you.
If we, if we wanted on the application, put on there that we're going to do twice a year, once a year?
Yep.
We could do that also.
You can. And of course, when they initially open, all of your trades are going in. You know, electrical, you know, your mechanical, your plumbing, everybody's going in at the start. So yes, if you want to do more inspections, you can do that. And, you know, once you get to know them, that they, generally, we get to go in and do, we get to go into facilities, they take us in, we're curious about it, we want to see how it works. Generally, you know, they will let you in, but you have to let them know ahead of time. They have all kinds of security requirements through the state of Michigan, so you want to make sure that they know you're coming, essentially.
I guess, my concern is things like the separation of activities. So initially, there's an inspection done.
Mm-hmm.
That's all looked at and proved.
Right.
Moving forward, how do we guarantee that those sort of things are still being taken care of?
You mean grow, process, and sell? Is that what you mean? Or you mean?
I mean, all of it. Like taking care of the filtering system.
Oh, yes.
The security, making sure all the drying and soil mixing and all that stuff is right.
Yeah, you can, you can decide you want to go in more than once a year. You can decide, you know.
But that would be up to the city for us to do?
Yes, yes. Now, Cannabis Regul, I don't think they, I don't know how frequently they come in. They issue their license initially. I don't know if they come in annually. I don't think they do, but I could be wrong. So yes, if that was, now, if there's a smell, okay, you're going to hear it, because the people around there are going to tell you immediately, okay? And so that's when you have to contact the license holder and say, "We've got a problem. Our ordinance says no outside smells, you know, da-da, everything's indoors here. And so we're going to have to work on that, because we need to fix this before your renewal comes up to us next year." Because if you don't fix this, you know, we have the right under this ordinance to non-renew your license. And if I said they've just put millions of dollars into a building in your city, and you're telling them, "I smell it out here," okay? Then we're going to have to really get serious about upping their odor control and whatever they're doing, because that's the right for you to non-renew. And, and non-renewal is, you know, a very drastic measure when people have just invested millions of dollars into a building, or lots of money into a building, okay? So that's one thing. The biggest issue we have is smell, and we have a lot of outdoor grows, out in the rural areas where we work. So even there, they put misting systems on them, they do other things, but it's much easier inside with carbon filtration and all types of equipment to control it. But you want to make sure, like, the first thing we're going to hear is, if, that's, that's the first thing you'll hear, is smell, probably. And let's hope we never hear that, because then we're going to get into some serious discussions.
Yes? Councilmember Lynch.
I'm liking the, the things that we have as stopgap measures, so that we can make sure that they're doing what they say they're going to do. I also know that the police department will probably look at it, but recommend that we take some of that administration fee that we're getting, and we also train a couple officers or building inspector or whoever, so that they know what's going on at the state level, so that they know what to look for as they go in. And I totally agree. I think going in more than one time a year is the plan, to make sure, because there's a lot of good businesses out there, and then you get the one that just wants to make money. And we want to make sure that that one doesn't choose Garden City to put their building in, because we want to make sure that they're following the rules and regulations, and that we keep their business safe and we keep our people safe at the same time.
That makes a lot of sense. And what some communities have done is they've created a marijuana administrator position, okay? Whether it's in the clerk's office, whether it's in Mr. Miller's office or whatever, you have a person who is the go-to person in terms of licensing, in terms of complaints, in terms of organizing inspections, in terms of being the person who is the touch point for the industry, okay? And because you're going to get, you know, money, $56,000 per one grower license, and Um, and because you're going to get, you know, money, uh, 56,000 per one grower license, and if you have more, more, there should be money, and even, even not, even with the licensing money, the 5,000 per, you could underwrite the cost of somebody who's a city employee already and assign additional tasks. Because that 5,000 per license is application administration enforcement. So this is an opportunity to start to think a little bit more broadly about, you know, who's going to do this work? Do we want to put one person as the touch point and as the, and that person coordinates with police? That person coordinates with the building permits and make sure, you know, no, no building permits are issued till the zoning is approved, all that type of stuff. And we do that. In some of our smaller communities, this has actually created a full-time position um, for a person in the community to work and do this work. Um, so that's another option that you could think about.
Great idea.
Further comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Witt.
So I, I believe you've said it through, but I just want to double check and make sure because I know the last time we had you guys out, it was before my time up here. But the state has gotten their act together with the new gentleman taking over for their regulations and procedures?
Well, I feel that way. That's my opinion. Um, we participate, if you, if you decide to go into this, you need to contact the Cannabis Regulatory Agency and get on their list for municipal summits. They have probably one or two a year. There's one coming up this week. This is where municipalities get invited to a Zoom meeting. We get to listen to Director Hannah, we get to listen to, and also through the MML or through the MTA, uh, there'll be conferences where Director Hannah will speak. Um, I feel really good about it because one of the biggest problems we've seen on our end, and I'm sure the industry might feel the same way, is primary caregivers who are not regulated under this scope, okay? Primary caregivers are not under the Cannabis Regulatory Agency. They're still over the Department of Health, okay? So the laws that we have, that I talked about tonight, the MMMA, the 2008 Creates Primary Caregivers. So we have a lot of primary caregivers that are allowed to grow for 12 patients, okay? Then a lot of them buy a house together, four or five of them buy a house together. They go in and they grow, they use it as a grow house, and they just strip out that house and they grow and they sell out the back door, okay? And this is happening all over the state of Michigan, or they buy, in my area, they rent a barn from a farmer who never knows what's going on, and they're growing in that barn, and they're selling. So people who go through the whole process to get regulations and license through the state of Michigan are not happy when primary caregivers are selling out the back door and undercutting what they're legally selling. So, I mean, that is an ongoing problem, and I, we haven't, I've seen Director Hannah go in and, um, go in and, I don't want to say bust, but go in and examine facilities where he thinks the licenses aren't up to date, they've lapsed, things haven't happened right, and they're starting to shut some of these places down. So that's encouraging to us because I have a lot of, uh, out in the rural areas where we work a lot, um, people saying, boy, that place next to me is growing marijuana. I don't know what they're doing, they don't have a license, I checked with the state. Well, they are quote unquote a primary caregiver. But there's like six people in there together, and they've got a whole barn and they're growing, and it's just in and out traffic. That is still a hard thing to control. I don't know if you have primary caregiver regulations here. But you can control it through zoning if you want to. A lot of municipalities just don't touch it, and that's your option too. Um, so I am pleased with Director Hannah, my personal experience. We get much more responsive answers from the agency at this point than we did before. And I think he's shown strong leadership. That's just my personal opinion.
Because I know that was one of the more major holdups with the previous council, so.
Yeah, and I did want to mention, um, there is discussion in lame duck session that they're looking, the agency, Cannabis Regulatory Agency, is looking to merge the two statutes, the medical and the adult use into one statute. So they would do away with these two separate statutes. We have not heard that it's going to substantially change anything in terms of regulations or authorities, but they are looking to merge the statute because there are some differences between the two laws, and it's a little bit confusing. So if in fact that did happen, we would then, if you asked us to look at this again, see if anything needed to change after that, and we would advise accordingly, okay?
Okay, thank you. Further comments from table?
I have some comments. Uh, just to clarify some questions I was asked. Yes, police officers can enforce driving under the influence of a controlled substance.
Yes.
Um, if I was able to do it 20 years ago, I'm sure they can do it now. Um, you touched on the fact that people don't hang out there. Um, if you go to a party store and buy whiskey, you don't sit in a parking lot and drink unless you got a problem. Um, it will not make it easier for Garden City residents, all Garden City residents, to have access and become involved with it because for a good portion of the city, Inkster is still closer. Um, however, I do have some concerns as well. Uh, one of them is the amount of money that's coming to the state, or to the cities now, to bring everybody in, could change. The state is famous for changing, uh, the amount of money they're kicking back to the cities as we can see with the, um, various amounts that we're supposed to get every year from tax money that we don't get. Um, and to use an example, you spoke that there's, all the money, all the money that's collected, a portion of it goes to various things, right? So just to, to use this as an example for the citizens to understand, when somebody gets a seatbelt ticket, a ticket is broken, broken up into three different sections. One of the sections is the judge's retirement fund, okay? So think about 10 years ago when a seatbelt ticket was $100, now it's $180, okay? So if, if somebody needs to get more money out of that, they're going to take it out of the city's end and put it more into the fees that they need. So this 56,000 or whatever is not guaranteed. Um, and I don't trust the state on that, and so that's an issue that I have. Um, so, and, and nobody, there, there's nothing in there that says it has to be changed by the voters. You know, if, if, there's always going to be a way for the state to be able to change it. And so that's a major concern I have. Um, and so just something to think about. Once, once it's in the door, anything can happen. That's all I have.
Thank you. Further comments?
I have one comment similar to that. There's no other businesses that we get money like that for, are there? Like the liquor store, we don't get a portion of their sales, or the vacuum store, we don't get a portion of their sales, but we're getting a portion of these sales, right?
All I can say is the, this was a voter-approved initiative, and it included this. So, you know, whether we think it was a, a carrot, you know, to sweeten the deal or whatever, you know, it is what it is. And I, I understand what you're saying. Um, I can only say it's in the state law.
But other municipalities seem to be doing well because they're getting these funds?
You know, it's a, um, if you're going to do it, you have to commit also to, whether it's a marijuana administrator or somebody, it's going to have to be the point person, and it's going to have to be managed. Because when complaints come in, when, you know, concerns come in, and especially, you've already had the medical here for a couple years, but I don't know if any of them are actually operating, ones operating. So this might be a change, and it might feel different. And so that might, there might be a lot of calls into City Hall at the beginning. So, you know, there has to be a commitment, if we're going to do this, we're going to agree to, and this is just my personal opinion, um, work, you know, fairly with the industry because people are bringing their money here and they're going to invest. And so I think, you know, you need to think about that, um, and be fair. But yeah, I agree. I mean, I don't, I don't know what we get in terms of liquor licenses or pay for that, or I, I really can't say.
What I mean is, the benefit of having them in your city is you're getting funds from this business.
I, I guess so. And then also, you know, there are some requirements to modify existing buildings and upgrade buildings, sort of like we just heard about in the DDA presentation.
Right. So, um, just to clarify, we're not saying unlimited, or we're not given a number of how many licenses we're doing. If it's in this three-block radius between Vinoy and whatever, and there's 15 buildings there, then there could be 15 licenses.
That could be.
And according to our ordinances, they would have to update these buildings that are now very, not very nice-looking. So, uh, we could say that we want these things to improve greatly.
Yeah, and I think there was some language added to the ordinance about economic development. In the zoning, okay, that's next, sorry. I jumped ahead.
Thank you.
Okay. Further comments from the table? From the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed?
Opposed.
Okay, motion passes 6-1. Okay, item two is Chapter 154, Zoning Marijuana Establishment Regulations. Mr. Miller.
Good evening again. So with the adoption of 124, there is then this second portion, which is really the regulation portion, which is in zoning, Chapter 154, uh, which we'll call Marijuana Establishment Regulations. And this is how we will regulate and seek the, kind of the connection between the business and then how we will get improvements to the buildings as we go forward. Uh, in the, in this ordinance, Chapter 154, which the Planning Commission did recommend to you for approval, uh, I wanted to add that there were, a public hearing did occur at the Planning Commission, and then we did take that, uh, public hearing and, uh, take some changes that the Planning Commission did make. Those were incorporated into this ordinance and also was part of the minutes from that meeting uh, to make sure that we encompassed everything that the Planning Commission had wanted to have included. But for, just to, to go through kind of the medical marijuana facilities, adult-use marijuana establishments, uh, of course, we again kind of talk about what is allowed and what is not allowed, beginning in Chapter 154.165. We also, right before that, in 154.005, um, have the definitions, kind of how we're defining all of this. And then as you go along through that, we talk about where the, where these can occur and the requirements that we have in place. I also included a map in the packet that kind of gives the setback and where all of these, uh, unlimited uses can occur in the M1 zoning district. We also make reference to, when we say it's going to occur in the city, then it will occur only in the, in one zoning district. And we kind of reiterate all of those, all of the items that we want to see to occur and how the, how the business will operate. So wastewater, smell, uh, co-location of the grow, uh, also the requirements of the applicant. And then specifically, of course, the co-location with the grow and the processing, and hours of operation. We do make reference to all of that, and then we goes, uh, a lot into the location which that map defines. Also, what was discussed at the Planning Commission is that, and Councilmember Carefotos did make reference to, that we've established some design standards for these facilities to occur. Uh, that area, the M1 zoning district, has older industrial uses, uh, smaller buildings, tool and die shops that they were originally built for, that, um, we have not seen a significant investment in many of them over there. Um, so this will be really a requirement that, uh, we will permit the use, but you have to make improvements to make the use, um, more palatable to the city and to the surrounding properties, and also increase the value of those, uh, adjacent property owners. Uh, so we have kind of some design standards that, one is of course appropriate site design, uh, site access and circulation, parking, uh, building form and material. We kind of talk about what the building will look like, and it has requirements for that. The walls, fences, and landscaping will be included. And then we also added a section of sustainable design. This is for site and building design that should utilize design strategies that decrease energy usage and reduce the urban heat island effects, and also manage stormwater to see how we can make improvements of sustainability and also protect the environment for runoff. And then also, another section that was added was safe site and design for community policing. So that when we get, uh, there's a whole movement about, um, how to design things so that the police have better access. We can, they can see, and it helps with the regulation and enforcement at that site. And so we will look at all of those, all of those factors that will be, um, come before them when they apply for a special land use approval. We will also have, uh, site plans and facade renovation improvements for all of those buildings that will be utilized for this use. So, um, with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions of the council, and, um, we can go ahead.
Do you want to make a motion first, and then?
Mayor.
Councilmember Squares.
I move to approve amendments to zoning ordinance, Chapter 154, Marijuana Establishment Regulations, to include Chapters 154.005, 154.165, and 154.316.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Okay, further discussion?
Mayor.
Mayor Proton Dole.
There's already a, a building over there that has come before the city a couple years ago, and they started making renovations to it.
The one on Harbor?
Yes.
The one, yeah, okay, yes.
Are they going to have to come back to the city for, um, any further site plan approval since these things have been, um, put together here? I mean, what, what's the plan for them?
Well, they will have to apply for a special land use to permit adult use at the location. And then we will review that use and of course the building and everything that came before us before to see if it meets all of these requirements.
Okay, thank you.
Further comments, questions?
Just a question. Is there a plan to increase the area?
Well, at this time, it's, it's kind of restricted, you know, by land use parks, residential, and some other uses. Um, at this time, there's not a plan to do increasing, uh, it's really, the industrial area's been in place for quite some time there.
So it's just limited to that one little area?
Yes. That's, and, and it's also not exclusionary because that is the only area of industrial zoning in the city.
Further comments from table?
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
In, in this particular, um, zoning ordinance, I found the spot that we had asked about earlier. If the adult-use marijuana retailer is no longer co-located with an adult-use marijuana grow operation and an adult-use marijuana processing facility, the adult-use marijuana retailer must cease, and the city may revoke the adult-use marijuana retailer special land use.
Yes.
So it's, it states right in here, you have to do all three, you're signing up for all three, you have to do all three. And if somebody thinks they're going to skate around it, it can be revoked.
Yes. We also, just a side note, uh, we've been working on an application because it's going to be the next step, kind of how we administer that. And so we already, already started that process. Uh, whether it was approved or not, I still want to go through some of the, uh, some of the steps to see how we're going to work on administering it and how, you know, how we'll react to when business people come to us. We will be prepared.
Okay.
I have another question.
Mayor Proton Dole.
So there were a couple places in here where it speaks about city council approval for extension of, um, time, time permits, revocation of licenses, that kind of thing. So does the license initially come before us for approval?
If they meet the requirements, I don't believe so. Uh, if they meet the requirements, they will get the, get that, but the special land use will come before us.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Further comments, questions? From the public?
There also is a cost for the extensions too, so they will have to apply and pay the fee.
Okay, from the public? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion passes 6-1. Okay, item three is renew the contract with WCA assessing. Mr. Givens.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, just attached, you'll find, um, a contract renewal for our current city assessor who evaluates the property, the value of the properties within our jurisdiction. They've been doing that for us since 2008. Uh, they are an established history of performance in assessing for us. Also service a number of communities. Um, we're happy with their services. And particularly in this area, we want to maintain consistency, um, you know, determining property values in the process. And our relationship with them is solid. We'd like to continue to do that. Their costs, I noted, uh, over the course of the last contract approval seemed to just increase with inflation. So really, we're paying the same cost, the, you know, it's following the value of our dollar. Um, so we, we, we find them, their service to be valuable, good, and I want to keep doing it for at least another three years.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Councilmember Lynch.
I move to approve the attached three-year contract with WCA assessing for a three-year period effective November 1st, 2024, and ending October 31st, 2020.
Support.
Support from Councilmember Witt. Further discussion from table? From the public?
Pause for a second. I, I didn't support it. You said Witt, correct?
I'm sorry, Mayor Proton Dole. Sorry about that. Okay, uh, up for vote, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes 7-0. Okay, uh, we have no other business, uh, all... I'll open it up for public comment. You have three minutes on non-agenda items. Please state your name, and you should have filled out a public meeting form. First, I know Officer Shelby Pavlov from the Garden City POAM would like to speak.
Thank you, Americanity. Good evening, everyone. Like the mayor stated, my name is Shelby Pavlov. I'm a police officer with the Garden City Police Department and our current union president. I'm here in my own time tonight to represent our union, and I wanted to take a moment to highlight a very important vote that we do have coming November 5th, 2024, which is the renewal of our police and fire milledge. As a representative of our union, I would urge you to vote yes in support of this renewal. Our community has benefited greatly from the dedicated services from our police officers and our firefighters, and we want to ensure that these essential services are able to continue in the years to come. Since 2011, when this milledge was first presented to the public, we have successfully passed it each time, ensuring that our first responders have the resources that they need. This funding has allowed us to improve our response times to runs, enhance training, and help maintain the safety and well-being of the citizens of our community. I believe that together, we can continue to uphold the high standards of service to our community members and the service that they deserve. I ask for your support in this upcoming vote. Your voice matters, and together, we can secure the future of our vital services. Would also like to add that we do still have some milledge signs available. If you would like one, we do have the Garden City Firefighter Local 1911, as well as the Garden City Police Officers Association of America Union Facebooks that you can contact, provide your name, address, phone number, and then a, one of the members of the fire department or the police department while off duty will go ahead and deliver that to your home, so you can support. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, further comments from public? Okay, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First, you know, thank you to Matt Miller, Attorney Kaufman, you know, wherever you stand on the issue, what we want to do, whatever we're doing, we want to be well-informed, well-prepared to do whatever we're going to do or make that decision. Excellent presentation tonight, very responsive to all of our questions, developing an ordinance that I think, you know, like, no matter where you stand on that, we're doing the best we can with what we have and what we know and proceeding forward. So I just want to thank them. Community Development Director Miller, fantastic job on, on this, and being very responsive to all, including my questions throughout this whole process, just an asset for us. Second, just congratulations to the Bosticks, you know, it's, it's hard to compete with the Bosticks when it comes to Halloween, Christmas, you know, decorations.
And we bathe them for five years.
And that's why we have a five-year thing. But, but they do such a great job, and, you know, so, and it just highlights, I, I just, you know, that commitment to the community, you know, and there is, there was a runner-up that really, you know, was a good runner-up. There was two houses on Maplewood that both did their decorations together. And while, you know, I, I think the Bosticks edged them out, it, you make a, when neighbors get together to do something, and it's, and it's as cool as their display was and unique, you know, they gave them a tough run. So I hope those two neighbors get together and do it again next year. I think it's a good symbol for our community that we get together and put it up together, not just individually on our lots, and hopefully more neighbors do it. I think that, in my book, that puts you a little ahead on the running. We've kept the judges anonymous, so no one gets yelled at, but I, word is that it helps when you work with your neighbors to get those decorations. And then just lastly, you know, yeah, I just wanted, I, you know, a former police chief, when I hear about some good police work, it's, it's good to send out some compliments. You know, on October 17th, we had a business broken into. There was an awesome utilization of, one, our dedicated officers to respond quickly, but they sent the drone over, got a view of the vehicle going away, they utilized our license plate readers to identify the vehicle. They, our detectives did a great job using the license plate reader information to also identify it as a suspect homicide vehicle out of Detroit. They got that information because of what they were able to develop from the officer's great response and the technology we now have in Garden City to let Southfield know and other agencies, but Southfield picked it up, caught him on the highway, did an excellent job taking the subjects in custody. So, you know, great teamwork with agency, area agencies, great use of our technology, just showing the value that Garden City citizens get out of all we've done at the police department over the last few years and continue to do this year. So just amazing work, you know, with good pride, I, I watch those things happen. And I think that's going to wrap it up for me tonight. There was a question that was asked about a lawsuit last meeting. I addressed that with that citizen individually, you know, most of our discussion about ongoing lawsuits and things like that, we try and do it closed doors until those lawsuits are resolved, so. Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk, Mr. Smith.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Going to give an election update, because it's hard to believe, but it is next week. So we are one week out from the election. First off, I just have to say I'm absolutely amazed and blown away at the participation at early voting. For context, total number of voters for all nine days of February and all nine days of August was 372, and on Saturday alone, we had 399 people come out and vote. So the crew over there did 18 days of work in one day on Saturday. At the end of the day today, we are just under 950 voters who have come through early voting. We haven't had the long lines that sometimes you see, you know, photos of. I'm mostly over here in City Hall, but every time I'm in the hallway, I look through the glass to see if the line is, you know, moving, and I haven't seen any line, so that's good. If I can't see it, then that means there's only a few there. So come on out, if you want to do early voting. It's been very successful so far. We are at the police department every day through Sunday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM every day. If you're in line at 4:00 PM, you will be permitted to vote, but come on out. I'm like, I, I thought optimistically a thousand voters would be a, a great, you know, early voting for this round, and we are almost there in three days. There are other ways to vote, too, in addition to your precincts on Election Day, as you normally would. Absentee ballots, if you have an absentee ballot, please get it back to us, the sooner the better. We've, this election, we've formed a better working relationship with the post office, that's going really well. They're actually making special trips to see me each day with ballots. But because we are a week out, if you haven't mailed it back yet, I'd recommend using our drop boxes or come directly to City Hall. We do have two drop boxes, one at the north end of our parking lot, and also at the Radcliffe Center. We check those boxes every day, so it kind of makes the drive worthwhile when there's stuff at the Radcliffe one. But just get that back to us by eight o'clock on Election Night. One thing I do want to mention is I have gotten a few reports of people, when they opened their absentee ballots, if they were in the initial batch that went out, that was that rainy, humid weekend, and they've had pressure on them, if they've been sitting in a pile on your kitchen table with pressure on it, there's some that have self-sealed. If you have an envelope, a purple envelope that's self-sealed, contact us, you can come in, we can get you a new envelope. But, I mean, guilty as charged, I haven't opened mine yet, but just do it sooner than later. Don't wait till Election Day and then open it and then have to scramble. But let me know if you do have one, come see us, we can get you a new one. And then the other thing I want to mention is, just on the lighter side, is we do have the new I Voted stickers, so the state provided us with variety, rolls with all of them on them. So we will have these at the precincts on Election Day, we do have them at early voting, and we may have some behind the counter at City Hall if you're turning in your absentee ballot. The one final thing I want to mention, if I can get out my soapbox for just a moment, is Election Day is next Tuesday. I just want to say to the community in general, be civil, be nice to your election workers, you know. I, I feel very responsible for, you know, making sure that they feel comfortable. They do it out of an obligation, civic duty, you know, they're not doing it to get rich. It is a bipartisan election inspector board. We hire, I'd say, 90% of our election workers are Garden City residents, so these are your neighbors, these are people from your church, these are parents from your kid's school. Just, you know, be nice to them, be courteous to them, and just be, be a good person in general. That, that would be my takeaway for that. But come on out, like I said, vote, vote, vote. It's nice to see that even when voter turnouts are down, I always say Garden City voters, you know, we outperform larger communities around us. So the one thing I had heard was Canton, on their first day, they like, they had almost a, a thousand voters, and we had 400, but they have three times the voters, so percentage-wise, we're doing better. So if you have any questions about the election, feel free to contact my office, we will help you out. One last thing I just thought of, because my thing probably just got another one of them, is if you get text messages about the election, because there's a lot of misinformation, you know, you get a lot of stuff from mailing lists, third parties, just know that my office, unless it's coming through the official Garden City NICSIL, we are not going to text you about your, your, you know, your ballot, or have you turned this in, or will you support this, or anything like that, because we get a lot of calls that like, oh, you guys sent me this text message about my ballot. No, we'll use the NICSIL to tell you early voting hours, polling site, you know, hours, things like that, but just, you know, looking forward to that part of it, you know, my, my phone. I got a lot of new contacts in my phone from third-party organizations that somehow know my number. But just, just know that, that those are, are not coming from us. A lot of the stuff you're getting in the mail from third-party organizations about voting, some people are getting absentee ballot applications still, unless it's got that official Garden City clerk, you know, on it, that's not coming from us, so.
That's it?
Yep, that's it. I'm done.
Thank you. Mayor Protemdol.
Well, first, I'd like to thank the city clerk and his crew for all the hard work they've done already, and all the hard work that they're going to be doing. I feel for you. Goodfellas Help Line is closing this Friday, so if you know a family or you are a family that think you're going to need some assistance this holiday season, give us a call, the number 734-679-7838. Congratulations to the Bostick family, and I have to mention that I know the family over on Maplewood, and the kids absolutely love going through that corn, cornstalk kind of maze, and it, it's quite a, quite a feat for them to get that set up, so hopefully they'll enter again next year. So congratulations to all the runners-up. And last but not least, and I might be a little biased, but I think that we do have the best police and fire department out there, so pay attention when they come up and ask for stuff. That's all I've got, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lynch.
Yes, I want to remind people, it's starting to get cold outside. That means that we're going to be getting snow, which means we're going to be getting snow alerts through NICSIL. There's a lot of my neighbors that still are not on NICSIL, and all you have to do is text 48135 to 888-777, and you will get the NICSIL information for Garden City. And it's real important, especially if there's an emergency road closure or snow alerts, get the cars off the street, it's coming. I won't be here to remind you of it later on, so I want to get you on it now. Get on NICSIL. And then the one other thing that is near and dear to my heart is the letters to Santa. People, it goes by so fast, it's about a two-week opening, and they, well, I didn't know about it. When was it? It starts on December the 2nd, and it ends on December the 13th. When you come into City Hall over by the police station area, there is a real cute red old-fashioned mailbox that you drop your letter to Santa in. Make sure your child puts their name and their address, and it's legible, because Santa will write back to your child, and it's just something very, very special to do with them. So letters to Santa starts December 2nd and ends on December the 13th. And other than that, happy Halloween, and watch out for the little ones on Thursday.
Thank you. Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor. Just one thing, and I'm not sure if it's too early, Mr. Gibbons, but by the next meeting, do we know if we have some idea of who will be that marijuana czar going forward? Is that something that is possible to have?
You know, I think once it's in place and we identify who in each agency we want to task with some piece of it, because there's quite a few different little regulatory issues, especially as they first open up, you know, we're going to be looking to identify the right person that can develop that expertise and knowledge, because as, as Attorney Kaufman stated, you know, there's, there's, there's going to be a, a lot of concern by those that are being regulated that it's happening correctly, so we're going to make sure we want to identify that person. So I wouldn't want to put a timeframe on who that person will be until we get an idea of, you know, the magnitude of what we're, what we're facing as far as, you know, licensing and how many are coming in. It's certainly something that's been a topic of discussion and was already in our head as the best developer regulatory system within our, because we, we built that into our ordinance and to carry that out. And I, I really like, you know, actually, I was writing notes as the attorney was speaking last night about some of those, you know, marijuana administrator and that, and put a little more thought into it, and then as we're getting up and running, we'll have somebody for sure.
Thank you. And that's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Squares.
Just riding through the city, there are so many homes. Congratulations to the Bostick family and to the others that entered the contest, but there's so many homes. Every year, it seems like more and more homes are decorated for all the holidays, and it, it's a good thing to see. And then I do have my sign already, I've had my sign for a long time, just to let you know, and that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Carefodis.
I just have a couple things. One of them, I just wanted to clarify the reason that I voted for this marijuana ordinance today, and that was because our citizens voted for it, they approved it, and I think it was almost 70%. And so I'm here to be a voice for our residents, so that's why I voted yes. I also wanted to say it was a great presentation by our DDA. Our residents really love hearing that new businesses are coming into our town. I know Matt Miller just briefly said that Kmart was purchased, and so we're looking forward to good things happening there. There's a new bakery and cooking classes store right by Play-Doh's that's going to be open soon, and there's also, I saw the sign going up today for the new women's clinic and spa over there at the old church at Vinoyan Ford Road, so we're getting a lot of good stuff coming. So I think there's been almost 10 new businesses just in the last month that have opened or the last two months, so.
What is the Kmart going to be?
We don't, we don't know yet.
Oh, you don't?
There, we, we're, the person that purchased it could be a part of a group, or it could be part of a group that he's already with, we're not really sure if he's doing it individually or with a separate group.
Just curious, no one's ever said that, so.
And then, what else I wanted to say is that, a question for the clerk, I had a couple seniors that notified me after they got their ballot and turned it in, that they forgot to vote in the back part, and they wanted to know if they were allowed to come to City Hall, give their name, and fill that out.
If, if the ballot has already been returned to us under state election law, because some cities can start pre-processing absentee ballots on the Saturday, the second Saturday before, if it's already been returned, it cannot be taken back and spoiled out.
Okay, and I also want to say that the Kiwanis, following up that they're doing the fundraiser, fundraising for Christmas, so they can provide Christmas for local children, they're selling their Nut Tins, and they're available at Lucky Dog for $25, and they're delicious. And that was it.
Thank you. Councilmember Earl.
Thank you, Mayor. First, for the high school theater program, ELF, is Friday, November 22nd at 7:00, Saturday, November 23rd at noon, and Sunday, November 24th at 2:00, and the Saturday at noon, if you want, you can do breakfast with Buddy, so Buddy, a lot of the cast members, you can, Santa's going to be walking around for pictures, pancake breakfast, so if you want to do that. Tickets are, just went online two days ago, and people are already starting to purchase them, so go ahead and get your tickets. I want to thank John and Matt for a fantastic job about the DDA. It's nice to see it trending up in, in a good way. You guys are doing a fantastic job, so thank you and keep it up. And last, but most important, to my wife, Darcy, happy birthday. That's it.
Thank you. Did I miss, where, where is the breakfast set?
It's at the Garden City High School in the cafeteria. So they'll go to breakfast, whoever, you can purchase tickets to go to breakfast and then go right into the theater and watch the show at noon.
All right, awesome, thank you. Okay, I have a few things. First, I failed to mention that I had nothing to do with the judging of the competition, and I believe they're, they were anonymous, and I think we may have flown them in from Switzerland to keep them neutral, but I had nothing to do with it, but, because there were a lot of- were a lot of, lot of houses that really did an excellent job, and to the honorable mention, houses, I will be out in the next few days to pass out your certificate of recognition to all of those. Couple events that just went on, Garden City Parks and Rec did the Egg Hunt, which was absolutely a great event, and it was a lot of fun, and some of the kids had some, they wore their costumes and they had a lot of fun, and it was a great event. Again, a lot of kids in the coalition that put it on did a great job, as well as the trunk-or-treat that was at Radcliffe. I believe they had 950-ish kids go through there. I know I went through seven bags of candy, large bags, and again, a lot of, a lot of good costumes and a great event put on by our, our coalition. I also attended two other trunk-or-treats in the city, right behind Play-Doh's, Garden City Nutrition put on one, had about 10 or 12 cars, and a lot of kids, again, not quite as much as at Radcliffe, but I believe I went through about five bags over there. So also, the American Legion had a trunk-or-treat, so I got to do Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and I think I seen every costume available, which were really cute, and it's great, because the kids have a ball, and that's what it's all about. And remember, Thursday, we might get some rain, so it might be a little dicey out there. Please keep an eye out for all the kids, they don't necessarily pay attention all the time when they're running around trying to get bags of candy. I want to remember, remind everybody, Veterans Day, November 11th at 11:00 at the Garden City American Legion Post 396, we will be having our celebration there. Everybody is invited, so that is November 11th at 11:00 a.m. Other than, other than that, no further business, this meeting is adjourned.